Good evening. So, welcome. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education to order. It is Tuesday, February 11th, and it is 4:30. Oh, sorry.
4:30?
Yeah. Sorry, we keep changing times.
Flanagan?
Here.
Hague?
Here.
King?
Here.
McHugh?
North?
Here.
I'm looking to approve the agenda in half a second.
Flanagan?
Yes.
Hague?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McHugh?
North?
Yes. Welcome. We've got two new county commissioners, and we are so glad to have you with us.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the election and the trainings that you've been through with CCI and others to get back to speed. So, thank you for the work you're about to do and for joining us this evening. For anyone else, any other welcome. Really, we'd love kind of just to hear from especially the two new commissioners, just what are your big hopes for the county and how we can work together?
I can go start. I'm totally heaven-balled. Most everybody's like me anyway. Child care is a really big one for me because it's been such an issue for like the last 30 years. I think when you get children embedded and inconsistency when they're young, then they stay in the community, and that's something that we have troubles with. A lot of families have moved out, and I think for us to have a solid, you know, community that works from the beginning all the way up. So, I love that we have a lot of programs now, the state part, and, you know, just trying to hold on to these families. And the school is definitely a big part of that, you know, the programs and anything we can do to help the system in that future. Michael?
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Nice to see everyone. Thanks for having us. Wow, you know, it's been a good learning curve, but a learning curve nonetheless. I have learned over the years that you all are a separate entity, except the schools can be directly affected by, you know, county services. So, for example, if we can support more housing, that will help the schools because, you know, living, people don't tend to communicate with schools. I know my son had some friends from JECO that did come to Clear Creek, but usually we have a dream the other way out of Kingburg to JECO. So, if we can have more houses for young families, that would be helpful. My other concern is the burden on our county from I-70. So, of course, our blessing and curse, the, you know, as a county of barely 9,000 people, we have about 35,000 to 50,000 cars driving through our county on a daily basis, depending on holidays and leaf peeping and all that. And we do capture some of the people coming into our county and wanting to spend money. Just had a great briefing this morning about tourists versus visitors. We're so close to the metro area, some people think of us as just their backyard, so they go to Floyd Hill, they mountain bike, and then they go back home. So, we're trying to figure out ways to capture some of those people, you know. You guys know with any brewery that want to open up in that business park in Floyd Hill by the, you know, open space, that would be awesome, but...
There we go, it's a future business, right?
Noted. So, basically, you know, just trying to find all the ways we can help our county in this really tight budget year. Unfortunately, the state is also a tight budget year, and national things are getting tighter and tighter. So, I feel like we need to do everything we can to take care of ourselves. Definitely support the schools. I agree with Jody that, you know, childcare in the county. I was able to read a book in Ms. Marlin's class and get to know a little preschooler and it's like, yeah, this is awesome, you have a preschool. You know, those kids see the school, see those kids around them, and they get excited about it, and they want to stay, and the families want to stay, and we can make sure their house. So, I think there are a lot of good things that can happen for us and aren't happening for us, but budget, budget, budget. Some way blocked right now.
That kind of leads us into the Forest Service dollars, which is budget, and that is a piece that is kind of unknown now. So, it's a piece that the commissioners and George or Kelly, maybe one of you two, would like to speak to how that works, but the dollars come from the federal, then you can share them with us, and by you sharing them with us, you get dollars from someplace else, but now that system might not work that way. So, I don't think that any of us know.
Well, there aren't any dollars appropriated federally right now.
For anything, because there's no budget for anything.
Well, the secure rural schools funding is part of the bill, and that particular portion has not been reauthorized. Senator Prapo and Joe DeWes have been talking about doing a resolution for those funds, but that has not been introduced at the federal level by statute for Joe DeWes and... If those funds come to the county, the county gives 25% to Rode and Ridge, 25% to the schools, and then at discretion uses the other 50 and historically has given that to the school district as well. But our concern is that there might be zero to give at all. And so, as we're building our budget and thinking about those pieces, that is a factor that we are looking at as well, and just really want to, well, encourage all of us to get the dollars and then to advocate that the school district should, I think, as whole as we can, given all of the constraints that we all have with that. So, I think that's just something we are paying very close attention to, of course, because we're watching, well, we're watching the federal government talk about abolishing the Department of Education this week. We are talking about the governor's commitment, reducing its K-12 budget by an additional $170,000. And so, we're looking at every dollar and cent to see how we can keep ourselves as whole and sustainable as we exist today. And so, really, I think why we want this on our agenda is to just be able to make the plea that should those funds come, we have to see how we might use, not only the 25% that we provide.
What is the dollar amount state from last year?
They have changed over the course of time. I think it's been anywhere, I think the big amount that the county has gotten has ranged, if I am correct me, but I think it's been about $570,000 at a good year. I think last year was just short of that, like $550 or something, but I think it's been in that kind of order.
It's been around that file or number, six, seven, three, is that what you're quoting?
Yeah. I think that's the grand total of it. And then historically, Commissioner Hartman, while it's been that the county has allocated 25% sort of in May and then decided the additional things later in your budget process more toward the end of summer, it seems like the federal government and the general office and the next second payment has come to pass.
Maybe the reason for that, or maybe just something to know, regardless of what is the reason for the timing, that 50%, there is another pot of funding that counties receive, and we own to receive it from the federal government if that 50% is directed to the schools. And so, that's, you know, just as a heads up, like if that dynamic changes, right, like the Board of County Commissioners, it's forever saying, yeah, okay, so we give you a dollar, someone gives me a dollar, there's more dollars in the community, correct? See, that's this is... That conversation will become more complicated, could become more complicated if that other pot of money, I can't remember the name of it right now, is not... Understand that you all have a big budget problem. We also rely on property taxes to understand what's helped that conversation looks like it has looked for the last six months.
I think that's where we're... A lot of this, you have been, you know, and I think you look at, you know, the funnel or you tip it upside down, and I just think there's fingers crossed on all of it. And, you know, as a public education institution, we're very concerned about the rhetoric that's happening at the local, even at the state level as of today. And so, I do think it's just a fingers crossed and probably continue as a district and as a community to really talk about the value of public education and how those institutions are important to a community and to an economy and helping to really make that a very clear point to maybe not the most friendly ears right now. So, I think that's our burden and I think an ask, you know, that the Board would have with the help of us in that conversation, talking about how critical a good vibrant K-12 system is to the work that you do and a healthy, sustainable community. We want our kids not only to have a wonderful education while they're here, but we want to create pathways that they can stay or come back and figure out how to have a good job and a good career and beautiful home and all of the things in their... I believe that that starts in this margin class and how we make sure that that value is a shared value across our community and then our state.
Carrie, and I saw that you came on. Did you get her bunk down?
Oh, no, I didn't.
4:33.
Thank you.
But I just wanted to see if there was anything you'd like to add.
No, thank you. I appreciate that Kelly summed it up pretty good, what I could hear.
Now that I know there's somebody there, I might sleep down.
Please do, please do.
There's always...
Also, since we're kind of having changes and risks associated with the federal government, the potential, this, what are we calling this? This 24-hour possible freeze, maybe forever, eliminating a lot of federal funding, inspired by the fire drill inside our organization, to try to understand all of the different sources of federal funding. We used to serve the great constituents of the Clear Creek School District. Roughly speaking, it's 20% of it. And again, important for you all to know, a lot of those funds that we use that originate as federal dollars are some of the things that you might care about the most, right? There are those elements of county work that's about delivering healthy kids into the school system, right, and taking care of the most vulnerable kid, I think, with groups, there's a requirement for conservative health funding. Just as in FYI's, we're talking about how different we are at the level of the federal level. That's important. Also, a lot of federal funding for roads, and of course, we aspire to continue to fly all the roads that you're about to drive.
Thank you.
Transit, our transit program, I know that's important to you.
All the medical services, all of our EMS, fire authority, sheriff.
Law enforcement funding, yep.
Not the youth, that one, yes.
And unfortunately, this is bad timing for us because they've been trimming, I think what I hear from the administration too, is they're warning everybody to tighten their belts and stop all this police flooding. We're already there, so there's not much else we can trim outside of cutting services that people rely on, you know, so that's a tough part for us.
Which is why we're talking then about local resiliency. How do we work together? How do we lean on each other? How do we use one another's assets to better everyone within the community?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Hearing my colleagues talk about sort of the priorities that they had on their way, and you got me thinking about, what are your priorities? Do you guys set annual goals? Do you have annual goals? We could talk about the ones that we have sort of set and drafted on, and then what do you need to kind of excel at to be able to do your job? Just kind of hear some other questions.
I think certainly shout, but I think we're in alignment on housing. I think we're in alignment on the childcare. We're doing all that we can. We've got the Four Plains Project, so we're all working together to make sure that happens so that we have more housing for more families. We're...
And for teachers.
Yes, yeah. Yes, Carrie Anne.
I want to say that my understanding of our priorities for us as a board is enrollment, enrollment, enrollment. You know, that's the one that covers all the bases. I don't necessarily see that it's our job to take care of housing.
Yeah, I think I would add that, you know, obviously, enrollment is key for us, and what we've seen over, you know, the last 10 dozen years, is a decline of almost 50% of enrollment. And for us, this is an unattractive thing to say, but every student that is enrolled comes with a financial allocation. So, it feels icky to talk about kids equal dollars, but when we are looking at budgets and we're looking at the kids equal dollars. And so, as we've seen a 50% decrease in enrollments over time, obviously, you can do that math to what it would come with our budget. And so, enrollment is key, which is why I think we were as committed as we were on the Four Plains deal, because we know we have more units, and there is a chance, again, double fingered cross, that kids will invest in some of those units, and then quadruple fingers crossed that those kids would choose to enroll in Clear Creek School District. So, I think absolutely enrollment is key. I think another big priority is really going back to the community and thanking them for the bond that we've just completed. So, I mean, it is fully wrapped up all projects. So, you know, we've got our facilities, who really doesn't kind of figure out those last pieces, but really want to be able to communicate back to the community, thank you for your belief and trust in us to execute this big portfolio. It's the biggest this district has ever undertaken. And so, that, I believe, helps us to set the stage for future tasks where we can really do promises were made, promises were kept, come look at what you have done for our kids. So, I think that is a huge priority for us as a district. And then I think the last piece I would say is just really how we build the ethos of our graduate profile into our everyday vernacular and the way that we talk about our students and what it is that we hope that they are able to learn and to do when they leave here. And so, that is not only are they well-equipped to do the next thing, but we want to make sure that we have pathways for what those next things are so that they can find that place. And I think those are probably the priorities that I would wrap up into.
No, no, I was just going to echo what Kelly was saying there. We talked about the bond referendum and, you know, what we did with that. It was a community effort to get that passed. I wasn't here at that time, but it's working together to do that, just like the things you're talking about. You know, we're all in this together, all of us are. Yes, you have a different role than we have, but we are connected in many ways. So, I think as much as we can do to help each other out, we talked about Forest Service dollars, I'm not even talking about that, I'm just talking, as much as we can do to work together to help each other out, I guess that's my perspective on things, and just keep us posted, try to keep you posted, and supporting you, supporting us, you know, and I feel very strong that that happens here from my short time here. So, I just want to, you know, I think it's really important to recognize the county, it's the county, it's the schools, the businesses, it's the housing, it's everything together, you know, and all of us have to be on the same page, as, I'm not saying we're not, but just to recognize that when the school succeeds, this succeeds, and that succeeds.
We don't have to wait until these quarterly meetings, you know, if something's on fire.
Well, I think nothing on fire, but one last piece I would add, and we would like to help the OC. I don't know that I would say that that's like an official priority, but I, we don't want to hold on to that for 20 years, like we did with the building on one of those. I think we need to help how we transition that property.
Are you getting nibbles?
Yeah. So, that feels good. Nibbles are good. We would like to really land that book.
A big bite.
So, yes, and, you know, I think fingers crossed.
I was going to say too, when I think of a community and just coming off the campaign intro, listening to They Like the Mine, so they have the 50 guys down because they don't have people that are prepared to do those roles. So, and I know we have the making the skis and the snowboards and things that this community could use. I think the idea of everybody going to college is kind of, it is, it's changing, and so it's nice for the high school to have, you know, classes or even if it's after school or something, so that people could jump into these roles instead of all the round guys got to go into the square pit, right? It doesn't pick for everybody. So, I think that's something that is important that I've heard of the community that, you know, or even, I don't want to say internships, but something, you know, along the line. So, we're not bringing enough people from Denver, of course, on the county. We have people that actually come all the way from Fort Morgan to work at the mine. I mean, that's crazy. And we have people...
Like rush, like the white nurse or something?
Yeah. It just seems so crazy that they are going to drive all that way through the I-70, you know, mess, and we have people here that, you know, can't get those jobs, so...
Yes, Carrie Anne.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to hit my hand.
Okay.
Self-high five.
That's totally what's going on over here.
Thank you. We did have a retreat in between the two. We drafted some goals. They are all very focused on our budget. We're workshopping a mission. We're kind of, we're thinking about something that's a lot shorter and more relevant than the mission that we had, and we're thinking it's something like, we want to lift up local, probably encompasses what's ever been. Our big top line thing is financial sustainability, and there are several initiatives that we're going to undertake this year to try to find some budget relief and straighten out what we're doing. We have an IT system that probably could be, we could save some money on. That's kind of a small thing. The big thing is in our jail, we spend $3 million a year on our jail. We have the option to house inmates somewhere else, like what Lake County does, and there's the potential for huge housing there. It's also a big complicated conversation, if you don't want to stay, which I would say, we've got to just turn off our supports, et cetera.
Sheriff, having to transport?
Yeah, the sheriff, the maintenance, police departments. Maybe you all identify as stakeholders in that conversation, maybe you haven't, but that's a high-leverage conversation. We're going to be looking at our facilities, specifically the facilities that house staff to try to figure out if we can get more staff and fewer buildings. What am I asking?
Well, along the jail end of things, there's also, Sheriff had proposed, apparently we're underusing our jail, but if we allow some federal prisoners to come, they, at least up to this date, they tend to pay their bills, and in the past, our jail has made money in public. So, you know, it's complicated, but it's also complicated if we contracted out, taking our prisoners to guilt them. You know, we have to transport them. We have an issue of not having enough patrol cars and enough patrols, so we source money and sending them to guilt them. We sell to transport them so that a person or two plus vehicles, so it's not a slam dunk, oh yeah, that's the way we should go. So, we're still talking about this, but that's, you know, I sort of feel like, as goes the county, so goes the school. I mean, we're trying to get our county budget healthy so that everything else can flow from it. So, that's why that issue came up. We're looking everywhere for saving, looking at our extra buildings too, see, you know, if we really need all of the buildings scattered around the county or if they...
Economic development capacity.
Yep.
The goal. I can evaluate the tax measure options that are available to us. Another way, your goals?
Yeah. Our objectives, I'm right there, put on the back of the list.
This November?
We're having conversations with, there is indeed, in our fire department as well, also property taxes, there's a bit in there, and the way the fire department gets funding is by the Board of County Commissioners, kind of a measure. So, there's, it could be a different thing for the fire department, that would be here on the unincorporated areas balance within the primary protection for certain, or there's potential for a public safety sales tax that would try to fund, you know, fire and sheriff and the mess needs all of the same time. Maybe there are other options out there. That's a conversation we're having.
Vanilla pass?
We're asking staff to scope a project to tolling on Vanilla Pass. We think our neighbors in Park County are interested in that as well, and that if being kind of a high-leverage thing to do, make a lot of money there and be struggling to manage it. But I mean, I think that being here, right, is, I know you two, and I know I do, and still do, although I don't have much time left, you know, a spy or two lead the kind of organization that has the capacity to show positive in the future. There's, I think a lot of work you can do.
I have shown some, a piece of information that I have no idea about. Apparently, the fire authority hasn't had an increase since, not really, since 1989. And just think of all the changes in our county, all the building out in the wildland, urban interface, and fires that we've had in the state that's getting scarier and scarier for those of us in the red zone, which is basically all of us. So, that is one issue that, you know, I think people would be willing to fund to have a more robust fire safety here. That doesn't directly affect us, except to protect all of our homes and our schools, but we're looking everywhere to what we can do. It would be nice to educate the public, the visitors, the tourists that come, that it's not just our county being greedy, having a sales tax increase. It's, we're, again, a county of barely 9,000 people, and we have all 7 million visitors a year coming through, and using our EMS, using our sheriff, using our fire. I mean, we, every, every season, you know, I get calls from neighbors going, there's a, how many of those in the bonds are, you shut your runners, come and go, we're going to go fire. Yeah, that takes our, you know, sheriff, our fire department, trying to go, you know, just back. So, it would be nice to maybe educate our tourists, but, you know, we're not being greedy, we're just trying to protect you. we're just trying to protect you and our communities.
You go ahead with short-term rentals, that was a topic in our last meeting. We had a lot of questions about our short-term rental ordinance. We have updated our short-term rental ordinance since much stricter operational rules, not allowing shooting, not allowing fires in the neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera.
No fireback any short-term rentals?
Yep.
No, out term fires.
Our, well, yeah. Yeah.
And, I mean, the thing, the really exciting piece of it is counties were granted the ability to directly regulate the platforms. So, when there's a short-term rental in Clear Creek County, unincorporated Clear Creek County that doesn't have a license, we're able to say, hey, Airbnb, please don't market it. This is, you know, this illegal activity, please don't market this illegal activity. So, that's, I hope, gonna be a big step.
How do people know if a property was registered properly?
They would, like, if you're on the Airbnb site, my understanding is that the license number is required to be in that.
Number?
We can look in our, you can go on Clear Creek's website, and you can see, there's like a map and everything of all of the registered Airbnbs. And there's also a form that you can fill out. If there's activity going on, you can essentially turn, you know what's going on, maybe we know what's going on in that neighborhood, we've got them. And I do not read that they're registered. I've not seen them on that map.
So, they have to be on that website to be licensed?
Yeah, it's a dashboard that our GAS team put together that shows, it's got all the ownership records, names of the directors. Those were, I mean, other ones, yeah, split between, those who are living inside their own.
Yeah.
Versus second home.
So, what's our question if it's not registered or if it breaks these news?
Ultimately, it's the loss of a license. And then, under the old regime, if you're operating without a license, there's this very difficult process of civil code enforcement. Now, there's kind of a shortcut, which is, so, you know, hey, you platforms that collectively have ninety-eight percent of the market share, now you need to stop advertising for this business.
We're in the process of, too, we're gonna have an assistant to our attorney. So, you know, with ours code enforcement, different things that are going on, there's gonna be more trying to step up than in the past. And, you know, the land of the homeless kind of thing, hopefully will stop, and people won't just think that they can use Clear Creek.
Is there fines that are imposed on the people?
Speaking of county revenue.
It means some money.
Um, I think it's, I don't know that there's a lot of fine activity involved, but I think it's about trying to just get people to apply on their roles.
Yeah, no, I, I. I thought there were fines, and then if they don't pay them, then there's some sort of leaning on the property. But not the case?
Didn't it, Peter?
They're recording my perspective if there aren't. It's been a full approach to trying to make compliance. Of course, when you're talking about somebody doing what we saw, for example, in the Echo Hills neighborhood where there's a campfire during the windstorm that drove the Marshall Fire outside a short-term rental, what we want them to do is not have a fire thing, rather than being able to get some money because they had the fire. And so.
Well, maybe you should be doing both. Like, don't have a fire, and since you did, you owe me a gazillion dollars.
Code enforcement typically in communities looks like the fines build up, and those are, that's how you get the compliance, you get the compliance at the end. So, usually by the time someone's compliant, you're away from fines. Do sure.
All right, well, the two I was looking at are, which.
Oh.
They should point out where the map is. Is there any, you know, you guys are new and fire hose drinking, are there any questions you have of us?
I don't have any questions, just something that I think I have found out that has really changed my perspective, is we have an aging community, and there's just no way around that. I have been delivering eggs around this community, and most of them are elder, they're seventy-plus. They're very active, like, you wouldn't even know. Mrs. Foley, went to her house, you know, they all ski. Mr. Foley looks like he's forty years old. So, we have this community that they don't have kids in the school system anymore. They're, you know, they're not spending as much money as, say, a family would. So, I think, and then us sitting in on a lot of stats, the people that are coming from the metro area, they're coming here, they're doing activities, but they're not spending money here. So, those are things that we, we have to change in the tourism, we have to change in the way maybe they're thinking about things. And I think even us as a school, I know when they wanted to rein the school up here, and a lot of the parents were like, no, you know, we don't, why are you putting the school over there? This is crazy. And it seems like as soon as the school got here, they got left, or people start, stopped having kids, and, you know, maybe one or two instead of four or five. So, and this is not just, they're crazy, it's not just this state, it's a nationwide deal. So, I do think the old ways that we used to do stuff, we have to change. And we have to learn what's, what is going on outside of our little bubbles.
I don't think building the school made people not have kids, that's what I mean.
No, it just, it was tied to that. It was the time that when people.
All those things happened at the same time.
Yeah, so they projected it to grow, but it did just the opposite. So, I mean, that's part of why the food budget was so underwater, because they projected, okay, it happened.
It happened, it just didn't sustain.
It immediately caused it to happen, it happened immediately.
Yeah, and there was like that peak in enrollment and then a big drop-off, just maybe it was just, maybe a five-year instead of a fifteen. But aren't your numbers up now? No?
Unfortunately, not, no.
Okay. I think we, I think we're flat right now. Enrollment day is in October, so that's when it really goes, it really goes. And for the most part, we're flat because we had a big class, a big senior class. So, when they left, that was a big shift. And so, we've got bigger classes at the elementary level coming up.
Okay, maybe that's why.
But, like, for instance, my daughter is in seventh grade and there's thirty-four.
So, my.
So, we graduated in the class of thirty-three and worked really hard to be in the top ten percent of this class.
Yeah, well, and that's hard when there's so few. And we usually classes almost hundred.
Yeah.
That's the difference, yeah.
I mean, my class had seventy-nine, you know, it was one of the bigger classes.
So, they might have seen that projection then, so a hundred and then.
Well, and then we remind folks a lot, and we did with the bond, and continue to as we think about setting stage for future asks, is that, you know, our community very lovingly refers to this building as the new school, but isn't it a twenty-one-year-old facility halfway through its usable life? Normally, a school is a forty-to-fifty-year life before you have to do really significant stuff. I think that's a fair bet. So, this building is about halfway through its useful life, and up until this recent bond that put lights at the field and bid somewhere has had no investment in that entire lifetime. And so, we refer to it lovingly as the new school, but it is an old school. And then we think about our other schools, and they're really old schools.
We have the old, new Carlson.
Yeah, the old, new Carlson, the old, new Carlson, I think Carrie Anne or Marcy could talk about the billion-year-old GPS. So, I mean, King Murphy is old, so they're all very old. And so, I think we need to shift that mindset with our older community that it isn't new, it wasn't just put in here and our kids still deserve our investment and a wonderful place to work.
Well, this is a bummer, you guys. Can we talk about, are there any bright lights that you all see? I know it's due and due from a budget perspective, but any bright lights to share?
Well, my bright light is, you know, when I was cross-selling the county, talking to everyone and their brother I'm talking to, so many people, you know, they love this county. They, you know, either have been here for generations, or they just came here, but they really like it, they like the small town. I grew up in a small town, I like small towns. You know, we're like, almost like this bright, bright light in the state, you know, it's like, we do work together, we do work to try to improve things. And I think, you know, I want people to have knowledge of what's going on, you know. I, we don't wanna hide the ball about, oh, we're in this fiscal crisis or anything. It's like, this is true, this is happening, we are working hard to make it better, and we will continue to do that as long as we can. And, you know, it's like, every time I read about what the school is doing with the, you know, the incubator program and the ski and snowboard building workshops, I mean, that's really great. And keep, you know, I would always, you know, somebody would say, I mean, our son did very well here in Colorado College, he's an engineer in Boston now, and people will say, um, didn't you go to Clear Creek? And I'd say, yes, and absolutely thrived here. It's like this small private school in the mountains without the private school cost. I mean, it's such a great place to go to school for many of our kids. And, you know, I think, you know, we always try to promote it, and it's like, from my perspective, periodically, we have a, you know, some parent who, you know, is an advertising person, and so she'll do all this work and advertise it, and then it'll kind of, Jennifer will graduate and she'll leave or whatever. But I really think we should keep promoting, you know, what a great place it is, how beautiful it is. I mean, going to the football games this past year, I mean, it's like quite a great beautiful football field we got. And just, if there was one night, there was like this full moon, and then all the lights, and it was fun, it was great. So, I think, even though it may cost a little money to do an advertising campaign for a school, I think it's good to keep promoting it, as our, you know, we're trying to promote our businesses and all of that. So, I think it's a team effort.
Cause for optimism from me, I think the county and the municipalities have built much tighter relationships and enjoy this work. And our mayors and commissioners, even, that you're, we're having mutual conversations about how to build a climate, solid challenges. I think the municipalities have a lot of energy themselves and opportunity themselves. And I think we have a great staff, and we do, you know, with a hundred and a lot of turnover at the director level over the last six years. And I just think we have a team of people that are talented and really care about the community, and are, you know, trying to show a maybe.
Fifty percent of the employee base have been with the county two years in a row.
Wow.
That's tremendous to hear.
Has it gotten better in the last few months? Or what?
We're working on it.
I have to say, my positiveness that I've learned is just the community itself. As much as people, you know, we have the, you know, the stubborn people, the taxes, they don't want their taxes to go up, but they do vote for these laws, they do care about the kids in that community. It is really important. And going out and, you know, I actually thought a lot more people had left, because they just don't get out anymore. They're at their houses, I knock on the door, and, you know, so-and-so answers. I haven't seen him for twenty years, but some of the discussions that we had was protecting the kids and protecting the families and, you know, what we can do to bring families back. They're sad to see not all the kids running around in the neighborhoods as much as they used to. So, I think that, to me, is an important quality that Clear Creek has, you know, they care about their neighbors, and we are a neighborhood you can go borrow a cup of sugar, you know, with, or if you have a crisis. And the volunteer of them too. It's, I'm in multiple groups, and a lot of the same people show up, but, you know, hopefully we can get some new ones in, take a hat off, put another hat on, I call it. And it's just, Mobile Home Park, you know, has a fire, and there's a team ready to go of volunteers, it's not advocates, it's not the sheriffs, it's just a group of women that get together like a towel and toothbrushes, just things you don't think of, and they will go deliver back to that family, ask them, what can we get you? So, I just, I think the community is really positive.
I think it's important that we remember that there are still good things, like, we have a lot of hard adult things, and what we're trying to do here is the best we can do, and that we can have adult problems that don't have to become a problem. And I think that's what we're really trying to think about. And so, I appreciate your good things too, because we kind of get buried down with some of the realities, the adult realities of budget and challenge and, you know, all of the pieces. But I think that is the end piece, is, you know, let's solve those problems, let's build an environment that is the very best for them for all of our kids, and build a way that they can come back and do the same thing for their kids. And that's what we're striving to do, and it feels like we have a partnership with you, and that's what you all are trying to do. Yes, yes. I mean, all three of us, you guys actually graduated from here, but we all have, you know, family or kids that have gone to the school district, so this is important.
I appreciate all your time. Thank you. Do you have any other questions for us, or any other comments?
I think the only thing I would ask, you know, we do try to meet with you all regularly, and this, you know, this is a very casual conversation, get to know one another, but I think there are things maybe more timely or things that you'd like us to discuss. I think we are open to hearing those things first for future meetings. So, if there are things that are top of the mind, I think we would love to build out maybe a more action-oriented agenda perhaps. I mean, this has been monthly, but if there are other things that you would like us to address or concerns or requests, I think we can really make these productive partnerships, maybe if that's something that people want to all do, but I would invite you to share ideas of things you'd like to talk about.
We used to have this, I don't know who was initiating, we used to have this kind of automatic recruitment at the staff level, I float by boards, what we want on that agenda. Oh, I know what happened, there was a panic.
This election.
Yeah. But, I mean, I think that would be a really good thing to try to ask our staffs to sort of bring to us, hey, does it really come up what we want on the agenda? Always, like, we've had good meetings, we'll need to find an agenda as well, so.
Anything else you need, Carrie Ann?
Was that a high tide?
She edited herself again.
Well, my action item is to find a brewery for Floyd Hills. Get something out of that that I didn't.
Probably coffee house slash.
Yeah, because you don't have to go dry really hard, and then you need to, like, you know, have a cold glass of water?
I actually need to chat to progress in the good for today, so I don't know, Pill is your girl's school.
Yes.
Yeah.
He might not know.
Pill is fine, so don't ask him about that, don't think he'll reauthorize it. He's working with Crump. So, it may have been introduced, it wasn't last time I checked. So it may have been introduced, it wasn't last time I checked. And also, maybe that one is a good action item of calling our Republican delegation at that level.
I think, and we need. DCI, is it, it's a majority of rural, Colorado has a majority of rural counties, right? Not populations, but it's like, they might want to get behind secure rural students.
They are.
All of a sudden, everybody wants to back to the window.
Everybody loves their moment. Well, thank you guys very much. Thank you for your DCIs or Schwaghtens, I see in those old-school ones, thank you very much. I bet your sister's daughter, I understand you did not. But.
She can supply one. I will work for emotion, which you don't.
Oh, great, great, great. Thank you. You're welcome. Oh, my God. Hey, King? McHugh?
Yes.
North.
Thank you all so much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Is Rachel taking the photos?
I think so.
Okay.
She should be here very quick.
So then.